Get going, David Mason. Everybody ready to go? Lucas, you and your crew ready to go?
Yep, we can get started.
Uh Cheryl dropped off, she must be sharing the box. Uh Cheryl, we good to go?
Yes, I am here, ready to go.
Okay, okay, great, okay. So, uh special meeting of the special meeting. Of the Ohio Historic Preservation Commission, uh called to order by the chair. Did that, uh Monday, February twenty eighth at five o'clock P M. Uh Cheryl, could you do the roll call, please?
Yes, Chair Akins.
Here.
Vice Chair Convery.
Here.
Commissioner James.
Here.
Commissioner McHatten.
Here.
Commissioner Preborn.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, James is going to make the. Flag show up magically, you can stand and. Follow me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. One nation. Great, thank you. I pledge allegiance. Okay, so things are just a little bit different today. I, public communications is going to, uh. We're doing that right here at this moment. This is the only public communications not directly assigned to a. Uh item number one. And so I think we have, so I'll read this first. Public communications is the time set aside during the Historic Preservation. Commission meeting for the members of the public to address the Historic Preservation Commission on items of city. Business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to. Staff and or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency purposes or emergency items, no action can. Be taken at this meeting. And so again, these are general comments, I. That, uh, we'll just leave it there. And so Cheryl, do you have some people on? That would like to, uh, share a general comment?
We do have, uh, attendees in the waiting room. Uh, anyone would like to make comments, general comments. Comments not relating to items on the agenda. If you could raise your hand.
Okay, I was asked if, uh, it's Dawn and Craig to ask Dawn, Dawn to go first, please? I can't see him, so I'm, don't know that they're there, but. And, and do, do you know what number of people we have that might be, uh, commenting now in public comments?
Uh, well, I do see. Craig Walker as well.
Okay.
I do see Evan Saint Charles, who we spoke about earlier, uh, who will be presenting as well as Katie Horak.
Okay.
Uh, in addition, I do see one person named Bill Delvac. I'm not sure if that person.
Bill Delvac's a lawyer for the applicant for item one.
Oh, okay, so they, they won't be speaking, so, uh, Dawn is not on?
No, she is here.
Okay, could you go ahead and then have Dawn speak and then have Craig speak? And that was done by, uh, uh Craig's request, so I'm just.
This is not related to the agenda.
This is not related to the agenda.
This is public comments.
Yep.
Not related to the agenda.
Not related to the agenda. Not related to es- essentially item number one. And at, in public comments, they can comment on anything. Or Matt, you look like you're about to make a point with your fingers.
Sorry, uh Gina is correct, this is public comment on items not on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so if you could bring in Dawn Tiedin, please?
Uh, she is joining the meeting.
Dawn, if you could please unmute yourself. Now you've muted yourself.
Hello, good evening.
There we go.
All right, my, my comments are regarding, um, discussion item one, El Roblar, so I will hold until that item is brought forward. Thank you.
Okay, maybe that's what Craig was talking about. Um, okay, uh, is Craig, did Craig want to speak on? Something not of, or other than item number one?
I will bring him into the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
No, I, I wanted to speak on item number one.
Okay, great, thank you. Cheryl, do we have anyone that wants, uh, that just wants to speak on public comments other than Dawn, Craig? And the applicants?
I do not believe so, there are no raised hands.
Okay. Great, okay, thank you very much, then we will, uh. Close public comment, public communications at this time and move on to disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. I, if the, uh commissioners that had either or both of those could please, uh disclose, I would appreciate it. Cindy?
I visited the El Roblar Hotel on Friday.
Great, thank you. Do, do you meet with anyone there?
Yes, and I met with Rameen Shemshuri.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh Gina?
I was with Cindy on that visit and I also, um, did a walk through our proposed downtown historic district. And walked in or around every single building once again in the district.
Okay. Great, thank you. Um Jenny, did you or Valerie, uh, have a chance to go and tour El Roblar?
No, no, I was out of town. No, I did not.
Okay, yes, you were. I hope you had fun. Valerie? Valerie, did you have a chance?
No, I didn't even know that we could take a tour in there, so. I guess you had to schedule one or something, is that true?
We did. Yeah, staff had reached out to, to each individual commissioner to schedule.
Oh, okay, it might have been an email that I missed, okay.
They, they, they even before that, they were always very, you know, offering.
Well, I wouldn't mind going if I could still do it.
Yeah, well, I'm sure, I'm sure we can go this week.
Okay, I'd like to do that.
Yeah, uh, so we'll talk to, uh, Lucas and Cheryl and see if, uh, that's available to be arranged.
That would be great, thank you.
Okay, I, and on my part, I, I did a. A tour with them, I think it was last Monday at one o'clock, originally scheduled for nine o'clock. And I, uh, did a tour. Uh Craig Walker happened to be there as a guest of Rameen and. Uh, we took our tour with Rameen and Jeremy. So. And then I walked around a little bit today, just for a few minutes, just to answer some questions I personally had, but did not meet with anyone. Okay? Do we cover everybody? I think so. Okay, great, so we'll move on to discussion item number one, uh, review of historic resources report. Uh, you can see the, the information there, uh, that has been put it, put on the agenda. And so we will go, uh, are we gonna go to you, Lucas first, or are we gonna hear the applicant? When will we, what's the order there?
Excellent question, thank you, Brian. Uh, actually, Chair, uh, Chair Akins, sorry.
That's me.
You got me too, too comfortable here. Uh, the, the format for tonight's, um, discussion and then, and then we'll. We'll talk about the recommendation, um, at the very end, is I'll give a brief, um, overview. We'll also then have the applicant, I think they've got a, a brief PowerPoint, uh, put together they want to run through. And then the architectural historian that put together the historic resources report that's, um, up for review. Um, and comment and recommendation to planning commission, uh, they have a brief presentation to, to talk about their findings and the results. They, they, and the conclusions that they drawn or drew from, um, with all the information. So I, I'm gonna start with just a brief overview. Um, I, I have a feeling that legal will probably some, say something at the end of, of my, um, spiel and then we'll go from there. So tonight's meeting is meant to discuss the historic resource, resources report, the findings which came from that document developed by the architectural. Um, resource group, which is A R G, was put together by, um, Evan Saint Charles and Katie Horak. And the recommendations by that, by this commission, which could be forwarded to the planning commission for determination. As part of the overall per, project. Um, six proposals, uh, were received and that was back in November. A R G entered into an agreement with the city, uh, post that R F P or a request for proposals. Uh, with several meetings that followed thereafter, both in person and virtually, um, with both the applicant. Uh, city staff and the community leaning into the February fourth draft document that's before this, this commission. The report covers all the aspects the city, um, required of the consultant, including local designation status, historic district. Contributor and a design which is consistent with the Secretary of Interior Standards. Um, additionally, this matter was discussed with the designated museum representative, um, that was, that representative was Terry Hill. With really good feedback when we met with him, um, on the proposal and the historic resources report. The one comment received that I thought was to note is that he, um, did not want to see the building competing. With the arcade, which I thought was an, an interesting and probably important, um, point. Also, this matter was discussed with the local historian Craig Walker with really good feedback, um, on the matter. Uh, at that meeting, he offered and identified support for design option number two. Uh, lastly, staff has worked with the architectural historian and, and support recommending to the planning commission design option number two. That's identified within the staff report as it maintains the project as sequoia categorical exempt. And it's consistent with the Secretary of Interior Standards. As I had said in the beginning. Um, the applicant also has a, a presentation put together, but. Two things, one is if legal wants to, uh, make a couple of comments, I think this is, this is the appropriate time. If the commission has any questions of staff at this point, um, we could certainly run through those as well, or we could run through the presentations. It's really up to the. Up to the chair. And Chair and Commissioners, before we go to the applicant, I do have a couple of brief comments. Uh, the item before you is for review and comment on a historic resources report prepared by A R G for the proposed. Rehab of the El Roblar Hotel. It's coming to you under Ohio Municipal Code, section four eight oh five subdivision O. Which provides the, among its powers, H B C is to review and comment on any historic resource report prepared. For any development project requiring, among other things, a designer view permit or any other zoning code permit. It's coming to you as such because the property, while certainly historic. And while a state identified contributing structure to a state identified. Uh, historic district has never been designated as, as a landmark, landmark property. Or contributing structure to a city designated historic district by the city council. Thus, it does not come to this commission for approval. It comes for review and comment on the historic resources report. I want to make that distinction clear. Uh, but nonetheless, it is here tonight for the Historic Preservation Commission and the public to review and comment on the historic resources report prepared by A R G. And its, uh, conclusions regarding the two proposed designs. With that, I will turn it to, back to Lucas in the chair and if available, any questions, thank you.
Okay, I, let me just a, ask a question, question and get some clarification. Again, uh, we are not, this is not a property where we are making a recommendation to. The city council for landmarking, so that we're in kind of a unique situation for us. That we are solely making a recommendation to the planning commission. Is that correct?
That's correct. And to the planning commission, it's a recommendation regarding the two design options and the historic aspects thereof. But it's not a, it's, it's not a, um, at this time, the applicant hasn't applied to landmark the property.
Right.
And the proposed downtown historic district, while proposed, is not yet, uh, that's not tonight's item, so it's. Relevant in, in that this is a structure which would I would expect be contributing structure to that downtown town historic district. But that's also not on tonight's agenda. Tonight is about El Roblar.
Okay, uh, agreed. So, uh, a couple of things in there. So when we're talking about El Roblar. Um, just to narrow down the conversation and the focus, we're not talking about the parking, correct?
Correct. No, the parking, unless, well, unless the parking touches the historic aspects of it.
Yes, I understood. Um, just wanted to clear that out, that's somebody else's. Uh, decision. Okay, the, but we, are we coming to, uh, where are, we will, uh, re- request. A motion and do a vote on our recommendation?
No, there, we do not expect, anticipate any vote. Obviously, it'll be comments from each commissioner. But because this is coming to you under that special provision of our code for review and comment, not review and approval. There will be no formal motion or second or vote taken. It'll just be a comments, which will then be forwarded summarized by Lucas in the staff report. And forwarded to the planning commission.
Okay, so then we will, uh, we will, each, uh, each commissioner will have an opportunity to raise, uh. Concerns or questions or observations, uh, they will be able to get, uh. Have that discussion amongst themselves, they'll be able, I'm guessing, to maybe ask the applicant questions after their presentation. Uh, and then we will, uh. Like, you know, I'm trying to figure out where we, where we get. So we will, at some point, we will have a satisfied commissioner questions. And we will then, is it proper for us then to express our individual opinions in closing up this meeting?
Yes, with the one caveat, and I may have missed it in there, after commissioner questions, public comment.
Yes.
Then commissioner comments.
This is my post-it.
Oh, I, that's not quite legible, but yeah, I, I trust the public comments in there.
It's legible to me.
Perfect.
Yes.
But yeah, so in to close the meeting, it would be go around the horn and discussion and, and I think we're looking forward to a robust discussion. Um, it just won't finish in a vote because this item isn't coming for approval.
Okay, okay, great. I just wanted to make everything clear as to what our objectives are. Okay, so at this time, uh, does anyone have questions, uh, other questions for staff before we move on to presentations? Or Matt, Lucas? Uh, gee, I can see, can I see everybody? I can see me, Cindy, Jenny, Valerie and, yes, okay, okay. So, um, I'm guessing we're ready then to go on to the presentations?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
Um, Cheryl, could you let?
There we go.
Yep.
Open the door, Cheryl.
Okay, am I, uh, allowing Evan Saint Charles and Katie?
Yeah, allow Jeremy.
Oh, Jeremy.
In the audience?
So we've got Jeremy McBride and then Bill Delvac is, are they both coming?
Yeah, so you could let Jeremy in first and see if he needs to have Bill in as well.
Hello, Jeremy, hello, Rameen.
How are you?
Welcome to the Historic Preservation Commission. Rameen has, uh, joined us before, Jeremy, I'm not sure that you've, uh, come to the H B C before, so.
Nice to meet everyone. Um, would you, would you mind, um, Lucas, if, if Bill joined as well? That's fine. Okay, great. As long as the chair is okay with it.
I, yes, I am. Just could you tell us what the role is of Bill, please?
Uh, uh, yeah, sure. Um, when we were informed of, uh, the project being a contributing resource. It was something certainly outside of our knowledge. Uh, so we engaged, uh, a sequoia and environmental expert. Uh, Bill Delvac to help guide us through the process with the city. Um, so Bill is much more fluent on these items as it relates to our project and has been a great support to us along the way.
Great, okay. Okay, then, please, uh, uh, continue with your presentation.
Okay, great. Yeah, sure.
So I think, um, good evening, uh, my name's Rameen and. Shem Sherry, I'm one of the partners in hotels where, well, as the managing principal of the firm, uh, doing the design work on the project. Um, I think we want to starting to be a big, uh, brief history on us as a group and how we came into this project. And kind of where we've landed today, but, um, we want to also thank the commission and staff for taking the time to review, uh. Our, uh, proposed renovation and numbers of the public for participating tonight and, and also in the many discussions we've had in the community. And also thank you to, uh, Lucas and James for all your efforts these past sixteen months in getting us to this point. I want to introduce you to our team, which is, uh, myself, uh, Jeremy's here, we have, uh, Warner Ebbing. And Eric Good as well, so we're all here together. Um, in case you're not familiar with our group, I'll try and give you a brief background on each of us. Um, Eric has had a home here in Ohio since nineteen eighty-nine. Uh, he's lived here with his family in the sixties, his father was a professor at Thatcher. Uh, he's an entrepreneur and conservationist and established a turtle conservancy about seventeen years ago, which helps protect, um. Turtles, tortoises and turtles from around the world, uh, while focusing on education and research. He's also, uh, an esteemed, uh. Hasn't had an esteemed career in New York where he was, uh, established longtime historic iconic hotels, the Maritime, the Bowery. The Ludlow, the Jane and Lafayette House. Uh, Warner has lived in Ohio, had lived in Ohio for about ten years before he moved into. To Carpinteria to be closer to his kid's school. And he's worked in the restaurant business for, for most of his career and, uh, owned and operated, uh, some iconic places in Los Angeles. Uh, Dominique's Little Dom's, Tom Bergen's, the one-on-one coffee shop and, uh, the recently opened Little Dom's Seafood and Carpinteria. Uh, Jeremy moved out last year with his wife and eighteen-month-old son and he brings a wealth of real estate. Development hospitality experience to our team. Uh, he was part of a core team that led the restoration project. At the, uh, former Chicago Athletic Association. A Venetian Gothic landmark dating back to eighteen ninety that helped convert and helped convert into a boutique hotel. Uh, he also worked on Five Beacon Street converting one of New York's first skyscrapers, uh. When it was done in late eighteen hundreds into a hotel with an award-winning restaurant. Both projects have achieved a design preserve. And preservation recognition at the highest national level. Uh, my family and I have had a house in Ohio since two thousand and eight. Uh, we've lived in the historic Libby House since two thousand and eleven. And I've worked extensively to make the property, uh, to maintain the property and restore it, um, to its, uh, original splendor, hopefully. Uh, and, uh, I've been working, um, in the design and architecture world for the past twenty years. I was one of the founding. Partners of a firm called Commune, uh, and left to pursue new endeavors in two thousand and fifteen, but while there, um, the company. Was awarded the Cooper Hewitt Smithsonian National Design Award for our body.
Had a home here in Ohio.
And, um, I've since started a new firm, Studio Sherry, that's received numerous design awards and distinctions for our work over the last five years and. One of our primary strengths has been working with historic structures to update them while maintaining the integrity of the original character. Uh, the point I'm trying to make is while we've all worked on large projects. We're not a large real estate development firm. We're incredibly passionate about this project and feel like it's in our own backyard. We hope to create an experience that captures the essence of Ohio and allows visitors and locals to appreciate, uh, our beautiful downtown historic core. Uh, Commissioners, you have an important choice tonight and it's important to us as applicants, but also important to our entire community. Our project will rehabilitate the hotel, uh, most recently known as the Oaks and bring it back to the Hotel El, El Roblar. Which was the original name when it was built by Edward Libby in nineteen nineteen. Um, I first learned about, uh, the Oaks in two thousand and sixteen. When I met Kimberly Clough and I toured the property with her and let her know that, uh, we'd all been looking to do a small pro, hotel project in Ohio for about seven years at that time. And Kimberly noted that, uh, that her family may consider selling down the road and that we would just, uh, stay in touch, which we did. And, uh, in two thousand and eighteen, almost a year after they closed because of the Thomas fire, uh, Kimberly called to let me know they'd be looking at, uh, offers and. We were a bit hesitant, uh, at the time because we didn't think it would pencil out, given the groups we were bidding against, but, uh, we were passionate. About renovating it the right way and focusing on appropriate design, promoting quality in our service and swiftly taking it, uh. Different approach to doing a full-service hotel in the center of Ohio. Uh, we wanted to do it ourselves, but just as importantly, we, as locals. We also didn't want it to fall in the wrong hands. Uh, the Cloughs had a number of offers and after much back and forth. They informed us they were gonna move ahead with our offer because they felt it was in the best interest of the city. And we discussed it with them then, our intentions to bring the building back to its original roots and make the entire property feel like it has always been there. Uh, an integral part of, uh, the history of Ohio and at that time, we wanted to express to them, much like we want to express to you tonight, uh. How honored we were to carry on the spirit and the tradition of this iconic property. Uh, we intend to treat it with the utmost respect and care, both architecturally and socially, and we hope to create a place that's not, uh. That not only caters to visitors, but also can capture the spirit of the, uh, local community and invite them to share in the humanities. Um, so now we want to walk through some of our initial concept as we, before we get to the main points, so you have an idea. Uh, I think we do have the internet. So, uh, we, we looked, when we looked at the project, we looked at the history of Ohio for inspiration, what drew people here, the beauty of the landscape.
Chair Akins, or, sorry, really quick, everyone can see the screen, okay?
Uh, I can see the screen, I have the screen on my left and then, uh, the, uh, participants in the zoom on my right, so. Is everybody else okay in seeing, uh, the screen?
Yes.
Okay, you have the presentation, okay, great, thank you.
So, yeah, we, 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 we looked at the history of Ohio, you know, we looked at the lifestyle, the agriculture and the work of Edward Libby had done with the downtown historic core. Uh, we looked at some famous figures in Ohio and how to include their history in some of the design touches like Beatrice Wood and Christian Murdy. And we were also, of course, inspired by the original architectural style of the building. Uh, we first looked at the work of Irving Gill. Who mentored Mead and Recqua before they opened their own practice, um, and were hired by Libby to work on a good portion of the downtown historic core. Uh, we have some early photos and drawings of, of the hotel and so we can. You can see over time, it's, uh, it's lived many lives, many repairs, additions and modifications from where it stands today. Um, and then we have our, this is our existing site plan, the way it is. Uh, and then this is our proposed site plan and our, one of our key goals, uh, that we want to achieve is trying to get back to what it originally was. And not have, um, you know, uh, cars all around the property. Uh, there's part of a cleanup for the front and the site, we would remove a good bit of the parking on the perimeter and replace it with more landscaping. Um, we thought it'd be nicer not to look at a building surrounded by cars with curb cuts in the sidewalks, but rather a landscape perimeter with usable sidewalks. And additional street parking. Uh, we want to encourage pedestrian foot traffic that brings vibrancy to the community, the Ohio Playhouse, Libby Park. The museum, Bart's Books, the library, Farmer's Market, the arcade, everything is within a five-minute walk of the hotel. Uh, moving on to the interior, we, these are some original, uh, images and drawings we found at the library of the interior and we use. So as you can see, this is the original fireplace and we, these are the original bathrooms.
Uh, Rameen, the slideshow for me is not changing. I am still seeing what looks like an outdoor patio with the fireplace.
Yeah, the, the screens have never changed through your presentation.
Oh, no. Let's try again.
Okay. Yeah, now we're seeing a change.
All right, so these were the original photos that we were referencing. And then this was the, this is our proposed site plan to remove most of the parking on the, uh, west side. The north side and the east side and just have the one parking lot and, and the large driveway in front. These were the drawings that we looked up at the library, the, the original drawings from the lobby and this is what we used as our inspiration. Um, to kind of design the interior, this is the original fireplace.
Sorry, keep getting booted out of the screen share, sorry.
So this is the interior rendering of the lobby that we did based on those drawings, so we want to bring back that original fireplace that was the, the. Local rock, the board and bed paneling and use like classic terracotta tiles. Um, this is our propos, proposed breakfast and lunch, uh, I'm sorry. This is the, the restaurant, the main restaurant that we'd use for dinner, these are line drawings off the lobby, um, and this, we, we would have open to the public. Then we go, this is the proposed breakfast and lunch restaurant facing the pool. It's on the north side of the main building. It's one of the areas that we're proposing to demolish. And it's not considered historic, but has a mid-century look and not really keeping with the characteristics of the property. This is the banquet hall, originally known as the Flamingo Room, and it's slightly expanded, but within the next, within the existing footprint of the hotel. And this is, these are our proposed guest rooms, which I think some of you that came to visit, you were able to see the model rooms that we had done. So it came out, you know, very close to this. And this is our proposed facade on Ojai Avenue, which we would like to reincorporate the original pedestrian arch that was built in nineteen nineteen. As noted, the whole mood of the hotel should feel more pedestrian-friendly. So we want to encourage people to park their cars during this day and do most of their exploring on foot or maybe rent some bikes from the mob shop. I think the big question for tonight is what facade will be supported? It's a critical visual opportunity that we have as a hotel is one of the first things that you see as you arrive into downtown Ojai. Aside from the landscape changes noted, we want to simplify and clean up the facade by extending the current arched arcade that supports the balconies above. This is option one, which we feel is more romantic and pleasing architecturally. It creates a seamless transition from the required structural columns to support the balconies. We feel it's more in line, aligned with the downtown historic core and complements it rather than competes with the core. Because, you know, the arches we're using are a different scale as to what exists in the arcade. In our view, simply stated, it's, it's prettier and more, both more sympathetic to and consistent with the character of downtown. Option two has the balcony supported by round columns and we can make this work and would like to cover it in vines, but we don't feel the transition is as seamless as it may feel a little more brutal and utilitarian than option one by removing the romanticism of the arches. The elevation of the balcony is also a bit out of scale. If it has to sit on these columns and this vernacular, columns were more, were used more often to support a trellis or something with a thinner profile than the balconies. So again, quite simply, we don't think this would be as elegant. So you go, these are the two. And after reading the administrative report along with ARG's report, I think everyone's aware that they both feel that option two better complies with the Secretary of Interior standards because it doesn't create a false sense of historical development. From our perspective, it's also clear that in the reports that the facade itself is not historic. And it's gone through generations of renovations and very little remains from its original fabric of what it was. So the reason we're here is because the building contributes to the downtown historic core. And we have taken the approach of what, what will look most natural on the building architecturally and better contribute to beautifying the historic core. We think there has to be a simple human logic and sensitivity applied to this matter rather than focusing strictly on the technicalities of the standards. If we can do that, then the recommendation becomes fairly subjective. Which facade you think contributes to better compliments and beautify our downtown historic core? Again, we feel we can make both work, but from our perspective, the arched facade is clearly the more natural architectural accent to support the balcony structure above. Before I conclude, I want to address one technical point. Some have said that CEQA requires a project to meet the standards in order to be exempt and avoid, and avoid NEIR. The city's expert, ARG, as well as our expert, has said this is definitely not the case. NEIR is only required if a project would destroy the eligibility of a resource. Here, the resource is the district itself to which the hotel is a contributor. ARG has correctly concluded that our proposed options would not destroy eligibility and NEIR is not required for either option. So the commission is entirely free to choose or comment between in what our view is the best, is the best choice to beautify the building as well as consistent with the character of downtown or choose an option simply because it meets the standard. So we're here to respectfully ask you to recommend our proposal for option one to the planning commission. And thank you for your time, Yoners.
Well, just, just in summary, just, you know, it's been a lot of information. This is just a simple slide restating some of the, the talking points around our supporting statements for our recommendation. The arches, as you know, exist today are a defining feature of the downtown Ohio, Ojai core. They're there already. We could do nothing with the project and they would remain. As part of this process that we have been identified for in requiring a historic resources report, we are under the understanding that CEQA does not require compliance with the standards. So both options in this case will work. The IR comment that Ramin made is required, is only required if the eligibility of the resource is destroyed. For the most part, we're remaining, maintaining existing conditions. Again, as, as Ramin stated, ARG has concluded both options do not require EIR and are categorically exempt from CEQA. This project will remain a contributor to the downtown Ojai district and we are supportive of that. The commission is free to choose the best option for the building in downtown Ojai. However, we spent a lot of time on this and we believe this is the best option, both for our needs in the community. Thank you.
Great. Thank you both. Does, does, here we go. Does that include your presentation then?
That's it, Brian.
But could you go back to the slideshow to the, just the slideshow that shows options?
Yep.
Right there. So I, I don't think I'm out of turn. I just want to verify since when we're going through hearing other comments, the only thing that's different between these two is the choice of the facade. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, just want to do, and that's what we're here to decide primarily.
That's only what we're here to decide. Also, Chair Akins, it's important to note, you know, we, we went through this process in September of going through, engaging historian to help us through this process, all by showing that there are no character-defining features left in this site. We, that was, that was supporting our original statement before, and this proposed option is, in our opinion, the best choice. So I just wanted to clarify that. The conclusion of the report maintains a position that was originally stated by us. There are no character-defining features left that remains. So I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, I guess I would just say, if there's anyone here that lived here.
And who's talking, Jeremy?
Oh, this is Eric.
I lived here in the mid nineteen sixties with my family. I remember this property, oh, sorry, I remember this property in the sixties when it had a wood facade before the Cloughs bought it. And I also was lucky enough to have met both Beatrice Wood and Christian Murdy. So I just would say that this hotel's gone through a lot of different iterations over the years and there's nothing remaining from the facade that was original. So I just want to point that out for any of you that were, remember back what it was like in the mid-sixties.
So we're stuck with this really strange condition, you know, we're told, Bill, feel free to chime in, but you know, the, the standards kind of don't make sense in the sense that, you know, we're, we're not able to create a false sense of historicism. We want to respect that, but this doesn't seem right in this case in terms of the design choice. So we're really hopeful that both options that are, are complying with the exemption will, will work and we're hopeful that you see it the same way as we did.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Again, I just wanted to put these, the two comparisons up so we know where our focus is in this discussion. Lucas, Matt? Anything else we need to do before opening up public comments?
I would also mention that the Architectural Historian with ARG is also available. I know earlier she had noted that she wanted to, to just run through the report itself fairly briefly.
I concur with that recommendation.
Okay, then let us proceed on that part of the presentation by the client.
Cheryl, is Evan in the audience there?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Evan St. Charles. I'm a senior associate with Architectural Resources Group. I'm here with my colleague Katie Horak, who's a principal with ARG. And, you know, as we've mentioned during this evening, we were the historic resources consultant for, that prepared the historic resource report related to the Hotel El Roblar and the proposed project.
Great, thank you very much.
We've also prepared just a short little presentation. Before we, does everybody, can you see my slides? Okay. So before we go into ARG's findings, we just wanted to briefly summarize the previous evaluation that was prepared in two thousand and eighteen. So as part of a larger pedestrian and bicycle improvements project on Ojai Avenue, the Hotel El Roblar property, along with the rest of the downtown Ojai Historic District, was evaluated for eligibility for listing in the National Register of Historic Places in California Register of Historical Resources. And as part of that, the district was formally determined eligible for listing in the National Register and thus listed in the California Register of Historical Resources and thus meets the definition of CEQA. The Hotel El Roblar property, which is highlighted in yellow on the slide, was determined eligible as a contributor to the district, but that same evaluation also determined that the property was not eligible individually for listing in the National Register or the California Register. So ARG's evaluation consisted of two parts. The first was evaluating the building for local designation since the two thousand and eighteen evaluation did not include a kind of a review of local eligibility. And then the second part was to evaluate whether the project would have an impact on historical resources and the, the resource being really the Ojai, the downtown Ojai Historic District. So our first, you know, as part of the first step, we just, we did primary and secondary source research on the property, collecting kind of building permits, historic photos, aerial, aerial images, maps to determine kind of the history and development of the property as well as any of the changes that had been made over time. And determined that although the, the hotel is significant for, or is associated with the early twentieth century development of downtown Ojai and was, you know, originally developed or designed by noted architects Mead and Requah because of significant alterations that have occurred since the nineteen fifties and kind of through the early two thousands, we did not feel that the property retained sufficient historic integrity to be eligible for listing as a, a local landmark. So this slide shows some of the original, you know, photos taken when the, the building was originally constructed in nineteen nineteen and nineteen twenty, as well as the lower images are showing some of the alterations that had occurred in the nineteen fifties with some mid-century modern additions to the rear of the property as well as a two-story balcony, wood balcony on the primary facade, which is, has been, since been removed. So to further illustrate some of the changes that have been made to the south or primary facade in particular, we have the original south elevation at the top. The center elevation essentially shows what the building, how the building looked in the nineteen fifties through the late nineteen nineties with the addition of that two-story balcony as well as storefronts at the first story of the facade. And a new port, port cochere structure, which is, I'm not sure if you can see my cursor, but essentially at the center, the central entry. And then the bottom slide or the bottom image shows the proposed design in two thousand and three and two thousand and four and essentially reflects what the building looks like now. So as you can see, the fenestration pattern has been changed. Balconies have been added to the second floor. The Mission Revival-style port cochere was added, replacing the nineteen sixties or fifties port cochere. And then this arched entry arcade was added to cover a inaccessible walkway to the main entrance to the hotel. So essentially with, because of the changes that have occurred over time, especially to the south primary facade of the building, we did not feel that the building would be eligible for listing as a local landmark. So our, you know, after we had evaluated the building for a local landmark eligibility, our second portion of the report was to determine whether or not the project would have an impact on historical resources. And as mentioned, that's basically looking at the downtown Ojai Historic District and the, the hotel as a contributor to that district. So what we were essentially trying to determine was whether or not the project would impact the hotel property to the extent that it would no longer be eligible for listing as a contributor to the downtown district. And, you know, we've kind of gone through the, the project at this point, but essentially there are two design options being proposed. The first is an extension of the, the self-arched arcade that currently exists there to extend the entire south facade. And then the second design option is replacing that arched arcade with a covered walkway. And what ARG has concluded is that both of these proposed design options would not result in a significant impact to historical resources. The, the project, both design options would retain all of the essential character-defining features of the building that remain from its kind of original design, essentially the two-story height, the flat roof of the building, the rectangular massing and its relationship to Ojai Avenue as well as the rest of the Ojai, downtown Ojai Historic District. But furthermore, the design option two, we feel meets the Secretary of the Interior standards because it removes the arched entry arcade and replaces it with a covered walkway that is more in line with the kind of original rustic Spanish colonial revival aesthetic that existed, you know, historically. Historically, there was, the entrance perglar consisted of just these kind of simple round columns with rustic wood supports. And we believe that the design option, it is our professional opinion, the design option two brings back that historic character, that kind of rustic aesthetic as opposed to the arched entrances, which are create a false sense of historical development because it romanticizes the original design and kind of creates something that was never, wouldn't have been there historically since the south facade never had arches or, you know, arched entry arcades when it was originally designed.
Okay, do you have anything else?
That, that was.
Presentation? You're done?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Lucas, anybody else as a part of the presentation or?
Nope, they wrapped, they wrapped it up. I think Evan did an excellent job.
Yes, thank you, Evan. Thank you.
Eric, this is Bill Delback. I was just hoping to reserve two minutes to speak at the end for a few concluding remarks and thoughts as to what has been said by the public.
And Bill, your role in this venture?
I'm a historic preservation expert and have dealt with CEQA and land use for my entire career. I'm an attorney.
Okay, great.
And, and part of the team.
Please continue. You're muted.
Chair Akins, I, I think Mr. Delback wants to speak as part of an applicant response to the public. If that would be permitted by the chair.
Summers, that's correct. I was hoping to conclude with a few remarks.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
So with that, I think it would be appropriate to take Commissioner questions and then public comment.
Okay, okay. Thank you. So we'll open it up to Commissioner questions. Yes, Gina.
So you want to take down the existing that's the port cochere that's there now, that took down previous structures that had been there, put up in the sixties. structures that have been there, put up in the 60s. Each thing that has been taken down was able to be done without doing damage to the original 1919, 1920s building, as well as the 1926 addition to the, to the building that we consider to be the, the front facade. If either one of these things go forward, assuming they will, and one of them will go forward, that is also relative here. If then, and someone, other steward of the land of the property comes along in 30 years from now and wants to take that down, it is done in a way that we can get back to the original structure without hurting the, the front of the building and that 1926 building, correct? Is that what I'm understanding? It would just be able to be removed, the arches or the columns?
Is that a question of the applicant?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, nothing is original right now on the facade. So none of the windows are original. They look you know, similar. They're in different places than they were. So I, I would say that none of the original facade is, is there. I think what we're proposing, and I think if any of the other experts want to chime in, is probably closer to the original facade than anything that's been there since the original. If you look at what, what's, what's there in the 60s and what's there now. But yeah, the original facade had different windows and it was, it was, you know, more of a pedestrian friendly, horse friendly hotel.
This is, this is attached to the front.
Yeah.
It's not something that couldn't be removed at a later date if someone else wanted to.
Yeah, it could be, but I think
Just like the previous versions of it that have come and gone, including this one that, that you want to remove. They all have the same sort of, where you can take it down without destroying the hotel is what I'm saying, basically.
Potentially, yes. But I think what we're trying to say is that what we've learned through this whole process is there's nothing that's historic about the building. It's just a contributor to the historic district, but nothing in the building itself is historic and everything has been changed over the last hundred years. So e- even if we took down the facade now, what's there isn't what was there in 1919.
Okay, thank you.
As I said, Eric, yes?
Sorry?
Sorry, you were commenting, Eric? Yes?
Yeah, I was just going to say that I lived here, as I said before, in the 60s and it was a, it was a wood paddled, it was, had turned into kind of a motel. It had no resemblance of this Spanish revival look that you see today, virtually none. And what we're trying to do, and I, I think we've said it many times, is try to bring it back to what it was, to be as close to what it was, you know, 110 years ago. And we're doing the best job we can, but it's gone through really severe changes. And as Ramin just said, there's nothing historical about it. It's really an ersatz faux, you know, Spanish revival look right now. And I think if you talk to the historians, they can verify that. So I, I want to make sure there's no confusion there. And what we're trying to do is our best attempt to bring it back to what it was originally. And we hope that that would stay because you know, we're putting a lot of time and money and effort into doing just that.
Great, thank you, Eric. Other, Valerie, you had a question?
Yeah, he just said that it was not Spanish revival, revival. Jeremy was right.
It was Spanish revival originally, originally, you know, 100 year plus years ago. What? Or Mission Spanish Revival when it first opened, yes, it was, but over the years, it changed dramatically.
Okay, so the, the arches, are those Mission Revival or Spanish Revival? Because I think someone said they were Mission and that's what's in the arcade, right? So is the arches. I don't know if that's Mission or Spanish or both.
Lucas, do you want to answer that question for Valerie?
In terms of the arches that they're proposing?
Yes.
Yeah.
I've reserved that for the, for Evan.
Okay. Is Evan still available to us? Cheryl, can you bring Evan back for that question, please?
Hey, yes, I'm, I'm back.
Evan, can you answer that question, please?
Sure. So arches can be seen both in Mission Revival and Spanish Colonial Revival style. Our kind of a point about the, the arches that were, are being proposed is that that's not something that was specific to the design of this building in particular. That is, you know, it is a compatible, an arch, that kind of arch arcade is a compatible feature that is seen in both Mission and Spanish Colonial Revival buildings.
So the idea is to go back to the Spanish revival that the, the building originally was, which would be the second option. Is that correct?
So the, the second design option that we, we concluded meets the Secretary of the Interior standards, the reason why is because that kind of those rectangular openings with the round columns is more in line with the original design of this building specifically. Which was more, it was kind of early rustic. I know that's, it's a little bit nuanced, but this building, because it was a relatively early example of Spanish Colonial Revival and more rustic in appearance with those kind of columns and kind of rough hewn wood supports as opposed to the arched openings that exist currently. The, those kind of more simplified rectangular openings are more in line with what existed historically.
Although nothing, although nothing in the building is now historical, so I guess.
No. Yes, that is correct. So nothing, just to reiterate what the ownership has explained, the, the building went through significant changes in the 1950s and 60s that essentially removed all character defining features of the historic south facade. And so the only physical elements that we have kind of identified as being historic is the fact that it's still two-story. Its rectangular massing is generally the same and its relationship to Ojai Avenue is, you know, is still there, but most, nearly all design features and, and materials have been lost.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you, Valerie. Other questions before we go to public comments, questions from, on the presentation. Jenny, you're muted.
I didn't want you to hear my dog going crazy. My dog is barking like a crazy. I just have a comment. I think this is a really, really good example of what we're talking about when we talk about a contributing building wanting to remodel. You know, this, this is it. This is like they, there's nothing left that's historical there. The columns across the whole front just scream Requo to me because that reminds me of a lot of Requo buildings, but it doesn't necessarily go. I mean, it wasn't originally there. The couple in the front were originally, I mean, on the, at the doorway were originally there. And, you know, I think that this is
Jenny, Jenny, let me interrupt you for a moment. So this is for questions to, on the people that are presenting?
Well, that, my question, my question is really just, is, is this what you guys are trying to do? Is this, is this what you're trying to do? You're trying to pick a facade that a contributing building to an historic town would make sense or fit in. You're not trying to recreate the building as it historically was.
Is that question to the, the
It's to the, it's to the guys. It's to the owners.
Okay, great, thank you.
I think, what is, what is their intention?
Ramin?
Yeah, I mean, I think we want to recreate, we want to get as close to the original facade as we can. I think obviously the balconies are there. There's an attraction to have the balconies, you know, because, you know, remember when the rooms are so small on the inside, it gives people a place to go outside. Also, you know, as we all know, Ojai is incredibly hot. It's a south facing building, having arches or a balcony, you know, helps protect from the sun on the lower level. And it helps with any elements, but I think both will contribute well for us. I think what's the, you know, we just keep looking at it as like, what's the more natural architectural move? And I think, yes, to your point, the columns are very Requo, but having, you know, a thicker, you know, four feet of plaster on top of them, I, I don't know if he'd ever done that. It's normally done with a trellis. And so that's why we would go towards, you know, the, the arches, because just the connection is much cleaner. And in person, I think it's going to read even more clean, much cleaner than it does in the rendering.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I'm asking, are you, you know, the columns don't make sense to me, other than the fact that they're Requo-ish.
Right.
So, you know, what I'm asking you is, you know, are you guys intending to pull a design that, that will go with an historic town in a building that no longer has, is able to be landmarked and is really, other than the footprint, isn't historic? So, you know, I, I, I think that your idea of doing the arches and just trying to make a building that doesn't look faux, but looks, you know, authentic is, is the right approach. I, I just, I think you have the right approach.
Thank you, I agree. All right, okay. Other questions for the presenters? Mayor Sticks?
Thank you, and thank you all for being here. Really exciting and so fascinating, the history of it. Just a quick question, and I'm, I'm sure somebody must know the answer to this. Do we still use the words colonial and mission?
Yes. Yes, as a style. Evan, that's a question for Evan.
Okay.
Are you asking in a PC way, Betsy, or in an architect way?
Out of total curiosity and when, because when, I mean, you know, you hear the word colonial. Yeah. Conjures different things in different people's minds and mission too. So I just, I mean, I don't know. I have no idea, so.
Evan?
Evan? Yes, yes.
Is that a funny question? I thought Why are those guys cracking up?
Yeah, so we still use them. Yeah, so in our, our profession, we still use Spanish Colonial Revival and Mission Revival to only, you know, we're only discussing style. It's not, you know, anything else, so.
Okay, I don't mean it would be a wet blanket. I was just really actually curious. Thank you.
Oh. Very good question. Thank you, Mayor Sticks.
Well, it's a good, it's a, it is a good question to clarify for the public that might not understand those as architectural terms.
Great, thank you, Jenny. Any other questions for the presenters before we go to public comments? Okay, Cheryl. I think this is maybe where it's Dawn first and Craig second.
Okay, I will be bringing in.
Good evening, am I unmuted?
We can hear you, we can't see you.
Okay. I don't see that option, so I will just proceed. Good evening, Dawn Titing. I have a few comments regarding the Historic Resources Report, the evaluation for listing of El Roblar as an Ojai Historic Landmark in that report, as well as the design options. Regarding the first matter of the Historic Resources Report, Historic Resources Reports are often referenced by later historians. Therefore, I recommend the following changes to the Hotel El Roblar HRR, prepared by the Architectural Resources Group. Firstly, ISIS Theater, page three states that ISIS Theater is no longer existent. Correct statement as ISIS Theater is actually the currently standing Ojai Playhouse Theater. Number two, Preservation Law Date, page 24 and 26 state Ojai Preservation Law was established in 2019. This was the date that the law was amended. The report also references no landmark criteria before 2019. Please correct references accordingly. And number three, accessory buildings, page 26 of the report states that ARG assumes buildings outside the accessory buildings outside the significance period are non-contributing. The Caltrans report references property, includes a review of the entire property and denotes the entire property as contributing on the map. Therefore, ARG's assumption that accessory buildings are non-contributing is not supported. An additional item of note on the Historic Resources Report, page 813, states that in 2020, all non-bearing walls, finishes, and fixtures were demolished under building permit Ojai 19450. Ojai Municipal Code and Ojai General Code require the identification and preservation of potential historic buildings. Therefore, this demolition should not have been approved by city staff without review by the HPC. Regarding the report's evaluation for El Roblar is listing as a Ojai Historic Landmark, the ARG report concludes that the site is not individual, individually eligible for listing as a City of Ojai landmark. I disagree with this finding as the property meets criteria A, B, D, and G, and that design is not the only criteria for landmarking. Landmarking the property is supported by Ojai Historic Preservation Law and the Ojai General Plan and could afford the property owner with substantial property tax reductions under the Mills Act. Therefore, I encourage the HPC and the property owner to obtain a second opinion regarding the local landmarking of El Roblar at a later date. Regarding the design options, Hotel El Roblar is listed on the California Register of Historic Resources as a contributor to the state designated Downtown Ojai Historic District and therefore is subject to CEQA. The staff report states that the remodel and exterior changes to the hotel are categorically exempt under three categories, including section 15331, class 31 of the California Code of Regulations. Use of this section exemption requires this project to be consistent with the Secretary of Interior Standards. Additionally, Ojai Municipal Code requires that work be guided by the Secretary of Interior Standards and guidelines for the treatment of historic properties. This project is described as rehabilitation. The term rehabilitation has specific meaning in Historic Preservation Law and is actually included in the title, the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, codified in federal law under 36 CFR 67. For this reason, the word rehabilitation should only be used if the proposed project meets Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. In conclusion, I support the recommendation for design option number two, as it meets the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation and is consistent with the Ojai Municipal Code and the meaning of the word rehabilitation. Further, please consider reevali- reevaluating Hotel Roblar as an Ojai Historical Landmark at a later date. This reeval- reevaluation should not preclude tonight's review and recommendations on the project with design option number two at this time. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dawn. Cheryl, our next speaker? And by the way, public comment is open, sorry.
Craig Walker.
Yes, Craig.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Craig Walker and I would like to comment on the whole question of following the Secretary of the Interior Standards. I hear the proponents arguing that they want to take the hotel back to its original character and to make it once again reflect that character and that design. And then I hear them saying, on the other hand, that it's not historic and, and that they feel like they should be able to just do what they want. And I think that the one thing we've established here is that it is a historic resource. It's on the Secretary, excuse me, it's on the state register for historic standards and I think that needs to be honored. I think the experts from ARG have made that point that it would keep it more and keeping with the original architecture and design. I think the Community Development Director recommended that option two be selected for those reasons. And I think that the expert from the museum, Terry Hill, said that he was worried that it would conflict with the other arcades downtown. And I think that's a, a good point to make because that's why that standard was instituted, was to keep faux historic elements being applied to buildings where it would create confusion in the mind of the individual, even if you're saying, well, the exact stucco, what has been replaced or something was added, but now it's off. That building still conveys the Oaks Hotel. Anybody who's lived in Ojai for many, many decades knows that if you saw a picture of the hotel as it is today, it would still convey the history of what the Oaks was all about. But more importantly, if you refer to the city's general plan, it states in the general plan, and I quote, "Historic resources," and this is a historic resource, "shall be registered and preserved according to appropriate federal, state, and local guidelines for the long-term benefit of city residents." And that's exactly And that's exactly the point, that the, uh, guidelines and standards that are on the federal level, on the state level, and on Ojai level, because as Dawn pointed out, the City of Ojai says that decisions by the H P C and other city commissions should be guided by the Secretary of the Interior Standards. And the expert who was hired by the city to advise them said that this would, uh, violate two of the standards. Now, keep in mind that both design options were developed by the proponent. And they ha, are saying that, I don't, you know, design option one is more beautiful, or they like it more than two, well. They're the ones that created that, they're the ones that created those two designs. Unfortunately, one violates the very standards that you are intended to support. And to waive those aside would violate the city code and would violate, uh, CEQA and all the standards that we get from federal, state, and local level. And again, let me remind you, the city, uh, general plan says that these buildings will be preserved according to those standards. So I do believe that, uh, having, I mean, what if the owner of the, uh, theater decided to put an arcade out in front of his theater now, and, uh, somebody decided to do that in various other elements? You would have a multiplicity of these Spanish arcades that would tend to diminish the authentic uh, arcade, which is the one across from the park. So I think, you know, people have been asking, well, what style was the original building? Well, when you go back and read about it. Meade and Requa traveled a lot, and went to Northern Africa and studied Moorish architecture, they studied Spanish colonial architecture, they studied the missions. And this was designed in more of a Moorish Spanish style. And as it was pointed out, there were no arches, no arcades at all on that building until two thousand and four. Uh, when those few arches were put up front, so this is an opportunity to apply the Secretary of the Interior Standards and make this building truly in your own desire to make it more authentic, to make it reflect the history of Ojai from the early nineteen twenties. So, those are my comments, and I thank you for listening.
Great, thank you, Craig. Are there any other speakers in the queue, Cheryl?
We have two others in the queue, one with their hand raised, that is Bill Delback. And then we have another person with no name, but it says Ojai, so if they would like to speak on this item, if they can use the raised hand function.
How about if we go with the, uh, Ojai person and then Bill? If you seem to want to conclude remarks.
Okay.
Hello, Ojai. Can you please, uh, unmute yourself and turn the camera on, or we will move to the next speaker? Cheryl, any indication that someone's still there? Okay, I think they're not there anymore. Uh, have they disappeared from the queue? Oh, there they are. Okay, well, we will move on and, uh, have Bill, uh, speak if he would, please. Bill, you're muted.
Thank you, thank you, Chair Akins, Honorable Commissioners, Staff, and Mr. City Attorney Summers. Uh, it's been a number of years since I've had the pleasure to be in front of this commission. Um, I am an expert in historic preservation law, that was what, reason why I was here the last time. I just want to be clear about a few things. Uh, throughout my thirty-seven years of doing historic preservation law, the Secretary of Interior Standards have been at the center of the discussion. So you're right to focus on it. Uh, part of my early career, though, I was involved in drafting and promoting the legislation that adopted the California Register of Historic Resources and amendments to CEQA. And while we always thought meeting the standards was a good thing. It's not a requirement. There are three exemptions cited in your staff report, which we agree with, that class one, class three, or class thirty-one. If a project has unusual circumstances. Then it may not be eligible for any of those other categorical exemptions, but you don't have to meet all the categorical exemptions. Here's the standard under State CEQA Guidelines, section fifteen three hundred point two. If a project has a substantial adverse effect on a resource, you may not use any categorical exemption. That's the rule. The rule is not you have to meet the standards, if you do meet the standards, it's an exemption. But you don't have to meet the standards, all you have to do under CEQA is to avoid destruction of eligibility, and we agree with the city's own independent expert A R G on this point, and they made that expert conclusion. Again, I'm not saying you shouldn't care about whether a project meets the standards, but it's a false dichotomy to say you have no choice. This commission is free to choose to not meet standards. I'm gonna speak for just a moment about a professional but personal view. The standards were developed to, uh, enable projects to have, use historic tax credits, that's where I got my start in preservation law in nineteen eighty-five. They weren't designed for CEQA. I chose to recommend them as a good measuring tool, but that's all they are, is a measuring tool, they're, they're not required. Um, so. I've come to understand that technical adherence to the standards is always technically correct. But it may or may not be the better outcome, and what our team is proposing, it's not that we meet the standards, but that it's a better outcome if we don't have to. Of course, this commission and members of the Ojai public can disagree with that, but this, this proposal was not a mistake, it was not a gosh, we don't know what to do, or gee, I wonder what the issues are. This is an intentional proposal with a point of view. You may disagree with the point of view, but, uh, and, and I want to correct one thing. The project team did draw up option number two, but it was at the direct interaction and suggestion of A R G, we asked them what project would meet the standards, because we know it's a central question to you, we weren't trying to duck it. So, these aren't both of our schemes, Craig clearly prefers option one, we were just trying to do justice to the technical and intellectual inquiry of what would meet the standards. Um, the project team urges you to think whether one, one view of technical compliance with the standards, and we, we're not disputing A R G's conclusion that one doesn't meet the standards and two does, we're not disputing that. We just think one is a better outcome. But of course, it's the, the thoughts are up to you to recommend to the rest of the city, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Bill. Um. So do we have any questions from, uh, the presenters, uh, by staff before we, uh, close pub, well. We're, we don't have any more public comments, do we, Cheryl?
I do not see any other public comments.
Okay, so we can close public comments, correct? Okay, I'm getting the nod. Public comments are closed. Um, so we can at this time then move on to, uh, a discussion with the uh, by the commission? Is that correct, Lucas and Matt?
Correct.
Yes, and we're happy to answer any questions as well. Uh, to summarize staff's position, between the two design options, Mr. Seabird recommends option number two with the, uh, rounded columns as more in keeping with the Secretary of the Interior Standards. Uh, and staff does concur that both options, one and two, could be, assuming all else was done correctly, exempt from CEQA as neither would cause, as proposed, neither would cause a substantial adverse change in the significance of the resource that is the hotel. And with that, we'll take any, uh, turn it back to the commission for discussion, comments, and any questions.
Okay, so we have, uh, we have, uh, Matt and Lucas that are available. Uh, for any questions that we may have as a part of the discussion, so the, the thought that we talked about at the beginning of this meeting is that we would go through a round of questions by the commissioners. And then, you know, other, uh, question, we can, we can have follow-up questions by commissioners on questions that may come up in the commissioner comments and questions. And then, once we have, uh, answered folks' questions and concerns, then we will, uh, go around and folks can express their opinion, again, as we, uh, noted that we are not making a, uh, motion to take a vote on it, we are just sharing our opinions, and those will go then to the planning commission, summarized by, uh, Lucas and Cheryl, and we wish them luck. Okay, who, who would like to speak first? Uh, Cindy, yes, please.
Hi, I'm Cindy Convery, Commissioner, and I have many comments. Uh, first, Craig, I wanted to address your comment about the theater wanting to put up an arcade, if they're allowed to put up an arcade type thing, and I you know, I thought that was really unfair and kind of hysterical, because the, the Oaks Hotel, the El Roblar Hotel is, has a design element that's different in scale to the pergola, it's set back, I would, I'm guessing twenty to twenty-five feet from the sidewalk, I don't, I can't, you know, measure that right now, but it's definitely set back further from the sidewalk. I don't think it would ever be confused with the arcade. David Berry's columns and, um, David Berry's arches were never confused with the arcade. So I think those statements are I, you know, I just don't think they're that legitimate, and saying something like the theater owner might want to put up an arcade, the theater's on the sidewalk. He physically, legally could never be able to do that, so I just, you know, I don't want to be have that kind of conversation with these owners, because I think they've really gone the extra mile to do the right thing. Um, as far as Dawn's comment, I do agree with you that this could conceivably be a landmark, um, situation. Not the entire property, but possibly the footprint, possibly the lobby, because of the characteristics of who it was built by, how it contributes to Ojai's story. The original footprint of the lobby is still intact in a certain way on the exterior, so I think that's worth looking at in the future for the owners, and I'm really glad, Dawn, that you brought that up. Um, as far as the Secretary of Interior Standards, they aren't laws, they are guidelines, which is what brought me to my sort of take on what's going on here. The Secretary of Interior Standards are national standards, and they don't take into consideration the local environment. They don't take into consideration that this is a south-facing property that has the Ojai sun on it eight months out of the year, it was eighty-nine degrees today in February when we started this meeting at five o'clock. So I, I'm looking at those arches, and I look at the arches in the arcade, and I believe that they weren't just a design element, they were built to keep the sun off the buildings, and they were built to create a better shade structure, because the arches are providing twenty to thirty per, percent more shade than the columns would do, so I look at it as an environmental consideration that's only gonna get, become more important as we face warmer temperatures. Um, I think the owners mentioned that they would want to plant vines on the columns if they were forced to put columns up. Vines use water, you know, and we have to be really conscious about every drop of water that passes through this valley. So, looking at those arches, I don't think they compete with the arcade on any level, they're a different, different scale. I don't think it's gonna turn into a run in Ojai and people wanting to put up arches and arcades all around their properties. And I do believe that is more environmentally conscious, and the Secretary of Interior Standards' guidelines aren't taking into consideration the environment that we're in. They're, they apply to North Dakota just as much as they apply to Southern California, so we need to put our, our Southern California problems into the mix here. Um, the Ojai, you know, I said the Ojai Arcade was designed to protect pedestrians and protect the businesses from that sun that's coming in. Um, there are a couple of other things, I mean, I looked into the Pasadena um, guidelines, because Pasadena, the architects that came to Ojai were Pasadena architects, they were Green and Green and Myron Hunt and Mieden Racoa and Wallace Knuth. And Pasadena has been developing historic districts and guidelines for years, they're like light years ahead of Ojai. So I always refer back to their, their direction, you know, when I'm looking for questions to be answered in Ojai. And their guidelines say alterations and additions should be compatible with size, scale, color, character in the neighborhood and the environment. So, an alteration or an addition as far as an arch across the property is compatible with the environment. I think, um, you know, I just think it's a better fit. The new work Pasadena says should be differentiated from the old work, and shall be compatible to protect the integrity of the property and its environment. Which I also believe that design option number one does, it is differentiated, and it is a different scale than the arcade we're looking at, they're not recreating the arcade, there's no way. Otherwise, everybody would think that the ar, the arches that are there are the arcade arches, and they're not. Um, then, a new design should draw upon fundamental similarities among historic buildings in the community. Our community doesn't have columns in a, in a Spanish Western style, you know, San, San Luis Obispo has a little bit of that. Um, San Juan Batista definitely has that style, it's much more of a cowboy Western style, which I don't see as a better fit here. I really feel, you know, we're strongly mission revival. So those columns, to me, strike more of a military or a kind of a jail style, it's, they're very strict and stern, I don't think they they contribute to the neighborhood, and I think the design element of the arches does pull from the historic buildings in the community without copying them, and that's what Pasadena says, pull from the community without copying it, and I believe that's what design option number one is offering. Um, the design, a new design should relate to the historic design characteristics of the district while conveying stylistic trends of today. And, you know, I've seen Ramin's work surely in his house, and I've seen, um, the work at the Turtle Conservancy, which is really fantastic. So I feel like the new design that these, um, owners are proposing, that they're in favor of does contribute to the historic style, and it does convey the stylist, stylistic trends of today. I think there are ways to differentiate the arches with certain design elements that could be discussed if that's an issue. But I, you know, I just really have to argue against the columns, I think they're, they're stark. I don't think they contribute to the town, I don't think they protect the building environmentally from the sun. And I, I think they don't compete at all with the arcade, I think they enhance the arcade, and they connect the town in a better way. Last thing I want to say is, Brian, you brought up a conversation that you had at the Rotary Club about another property owner saying, well, if I'm not allowed to, um, recreate a historic look, does that mean I have to do something completely different? And I think it's really important what we talk about tonight, because this sets a precedent going forward. You know, this is the first project prior to the Downtown Core being discussed. And what we do here and how we treat these owners will reflect to every business owner about what they might have to go through in the future. And I think we really need to be very respectful of how we approach that. Um, you know, these, these are really good owners, and they really have the right approach, so we need to respect that, but we also need to make a decision that allows for people to have their stylistic input and still be within keeping of the secretary's guidelines, you know, within reason, as, um, Bill discussed. And that goes towards speaking to the future owners of properties in the Historic Core and what they're gonna be looking at. So I really think that is, that is a key issue that we're gonna be deciding and commenting on tonight, because that's gonna set the precedent going forward. That's my comment.
Great, thank you, Cindy. Uh, next, Gina, yes, please.
So, um, first, I am grateful that the new stewards of this property are attempting to undo the two thousand three, two thousand four facade to be El Roblar. They're trying to right some wrongs there. I am dismayed that the two thousand three, two thousand four H P C didn't request an H R, as well as after reading the minutes from the didn't request an HRR as well as after reading the minutes from the seven twenty-one, two thousand and three, um, meeting, there was no mention of SEQA. There was no mention of the Secretary of the Interior Standards. The HPC seemed to, one by one, actually talk about how much they liked it and how much they thought it was nice that it looked historic and that it matched the downtown. Ideally, stewards of this property will choose to follow the Secretary of the Interior Standards, but I find myself in a predicament thinking that a previous HPC chose to ignore the standards and I feel that we can't favor one owner over another owner, allowing one owner to create something that looks historic and be celebrated for that and asking another owner not to. That is why I'm hoping as we go forward with our downtown historic district that we make simple expectations of contributing properties and that we choose to make it clear what we expect of our, um, contributing owners. Um, when I hit it before about the footprint of the property, footprint of the property, whether there are, um, there's, there is or there isn't historic features, just like Cindy said, the footprint remains. And as long as the, whether the columns or the, the pole, whenever you call those things, um, are, are either, as long as they could be removed off the footprint, um, like it has so many times before with the nineteen-sixties version with the two thousand and three, two thousand and four version. Um, I, I think that we need to, to take that into consideration that there is a present that was for this property that we did, this group, this one, not necessarily these people, but the HPC did approve a, um, an addition onto the front, the facade of this because it looked historic and because it fit in to the downtown and matched the arcade. You're muted, Brian.
Jenny, I see your hand is up, please. My hand is up. I just want to say that, um, you know, Cindy very eloquently reading the, the Pasadena, um, guidelines was really, you know, saying what my question was, was, you know, are you intending? This was a good, this is a good example for what we're doing, as Gina said, moving forward. We're listening to the owners, we're listening to the designers and we're reviewing a design as well as a possible historic designation. I think maybe too much of our conversation was about the entire space being designated historic. And, um, maybe that's a little bit where Evan was coming from, but some of the things that were, that come up about just the lobby or just the footprint or something, I think are really interesting progressive ideas about how to designate historical spaces without having the entire building end-to-end require that designation. So I just want to say that, that brings up a lot of great ideas as we move forward and I like that. So, um, the building, you know, it's funny how everyone's saying that this kind of faux historical design, you know, when, like Gina just said, that's exactly what they did in two thousand and three. You know, and, and I have, you know, I have to honestly say, you know, it's, it's, it's a bit of a matter of taste. And, you know, unless it is to the T re constructing, uh, an historic building, you know, a lot of these comments are a bit about a matter of taste. And I also agree with, with Cindy and, and the harshness of those columns, the, the idea of the sun, which I never would have even thought about if she had mentioned that. I think that's a very, and, and I, and I also want to say the comment about the theater was really unnecessary. I think that that, that physically could never happen. And I think comments like that just rile up the, the, I don't know, just a bit of craziness. And, and, you know, let's keep it focused on not the hypotheticals of what could maybe never happen. So I, I just wanted, you know, I really like design number one, matter of taste. But I also think that all of the points that the client, um, the owner's historian brought up are very, very important points. I mean, I just, you know, I think we're kind of looking for an all or nothing. And I think this last bit of the conversation, you know, with the historian's comments and what has just been said is about finding these little places to keep it right, um, without, without overstepping. And so I, you know, I think that we should go with the design that, that the developers, I mean, that the owners really feel, you know, is pulled from the community and its environment without copying it. That's my, that's my comment.
Okay, great. Thank you, Jenny. Uh, Valerie, do you have questions?
Remember, I'm le, I'm leaving early, so I was supposed to leave.
That was thirty-nine minutes ago. I kept looking down and saying, we're still here.
I have to say, I agree with Jenny that, you know, it is much more aesthetically pleasing. It is a bit too utilitarian. The other design, it's kind of almost depressing. So it's, it's a very hard thing because I think it's between the letter of the law and the spirit of the law. And it's, mm-hmm. Did you want to say something, Jenny?
No, just, that's an excellent point. The spirit of the law is an excellent point.
And in the spirit, I feel much happier in the, the aesthetic that they proposed. And we can't always go by the letter of the law when it's that stark, you know?
Okay, thank you, Valerie. Okay, uh, my questions. I, I guess, uh, in looking at this and thinking about this, I actually drove downtown so I could look at it some more, uh, different angles. Um, one thing we didn't bring up and a question that I had clear back from the beginning was, you know, we have the big, somebody's gonna have to do the French for me, porté de chair or something, whatever that's called. Sorry, I'm a Spanish speaker. Um, Cindy's both ended up laughing.
Shouldn't it be a Spanish word, though?
I don't, I have no idea. So, but we have the big one that's there in the middle. And that's being taken down. And then, if you look at it, you'll see a smaller one that's out at the sidewalk. Uh, and it's down east from where the current one is. And I'm like, what the heck, did that happen? And that was actually to take it back to where there previously was a, an arch, um, looking at the historic records. And so, and it's an arch, by the way. So the, the other question I have, and I went over this morning and I, uh, talked to Terry Hill, who was the museum rep uh, for us. And, and as Lucas said, met with the, uh, the owners and with Lucas. Uh, he's been here, he said originally he came to Ojai looking for a job in nineteen fifty-nine. So that gives you some, uh, timeframe for when he was here. Uh, he hit, when they did the changes that took place in nineteen seventy, uh, he says they wrote it off as ever being a landmark. Uh, the question was, why didn't they, why didn't we hear about this being landmarked clear back when these, uh, you know, large, not size-wise, but, but, uh, experience-wise in the Historic Preservation Commission, why had they landmarked? And his comment was, no, we never even thought about landmarking it after the nineteen seventy issue. And so that was interesting, interesting to me. And so my question to, in my mind, that I'm trying to understand is we are treating, we seem to be treating this as though it's a landmark from the SEQA regulations, but then we're being told by the, by Evan and ARG that it is not a landmark in any other way. And by the way, uh, I agree with Dawn that, uh, that there are, I, you know, I looked through the, the different items on, the eight different items on landmarking and there certainly are areas where if the owners came back to us at a future date, they could apply for a landmark, not part of our discussion, but still something that we should uh, not write off at this moment, but hold in abeyance for the future depending on what they do. But to me, we're, we're treating this as though it's a landmarked subject, uh, to these requirements. Although, uh, both options meet the SEQA requirements, but they don't meet the Secretary of the Interior Standards' comments. And, um, you know, going back to what, uh, Cindy said, huh, you know, that's a a blanket approach across a, an important spot. And I'm not much on exceptions, but, um, I, I go back to Cindy, also made a great point, is that if you put the arches across that front place, you're going to, I mean, there's gonna be people that are going to be eating there in the hottest part of the day. People who are wanting to go out on the, what would be the patio beyond the, uh, the doors for the dining area. And, well, you're not gonna want to be in that room or eating right when that sun's coming in and beating down, down on you. So, uh, I think there is, uh, from a protection standpoint, from a climate standpoint, that there is, uh, some benefit to, uh, having the arches as opposed to the, the poles coming down. You, you know, looking at it right now, you have arches on the left, you have the, the supports on the right. And it kind of makes sense if you're gonna put people on that patio so they're looking, and we went out, but we looked on that and you're sitting there and you're watching traffic go by. That is going to be limited with the arches. But again, there's the benefit of being able to go out there at most any, uh, part of the day. So, um, I, I, I like the arches in there. I, I like what I think was Evan said, hey, if you put the rustic poles in there, it kind of takes you back to its originality when the, I collect postcards, I have all kinds of postcards that show the phases on this, but rusty poles in the front that take you back to the original building is only gonna be appreciated by the handful of people that are on this broadcast right at the moment. Most of the people visiting from out of town are not going to understand that, that connectivity. So I appreciate, you know, Evan's suggestion and comparison on that. Uh, Lucas?
Let me actually jump in there if I may.
Okay, Matt, yes, please.
Thank you, Chair. So to go from one point, the city is not treating this as a landmark because it's not a city-designated landmark.
Absolutely.
That's a defined term, requires council approval and it's not presently done. I'm not going to opine in this moment on whether it would or would not be eligible for city landmarking because the applicant hasn't applied.
Absolutely.
We'll cross that bridge if and when they apply. The, and the comments from the commissioners are, commissioners are noted on that, on that point, so too the report from the historian ARG. But that's not on the question. So it's not being treated as a city landmark because it is not a city landmark. It is, however, a historic resource for purposes of SEQA because of its inclusion as a contributing structure to the state-designated historic district. That's the, the chain that gets you to it being a historic resource for sequel purposes. Hence, the relevance of the Secretary of the Interior Standards. But as noted, those are guidelines and standards necessary for federal, uh, historic preservation tax compliance and relevant to the conversation about SEQA, but not the end-all, be-all, end-all. Because the SEQA question to force an EIR looks at whether the work would or would not cause a substantial adverse change in the historic resource. As distinct from would it comply with the, would the renovations comply with the standards. It's two different tests. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Matt, for that clarification. Appreciate that. Cindy?
Um, yeah, I just was wanting to talk about your comment a little bit on the arches and the sun. And the reason why I came to that is because the best design elements always have a reason. And I realized that the arcade was designed because of that south-facing view. And, you know, you, you can look through, whether it's a dumb waiter or a back staircase, there's all these wonderful historic buildings. They always have a reason for what they did. They didn't just do it for laughs or, you know, because they like arches. So that, I just wanted to, you know, articulate that a little bit more. That there is a reason behind this. It's not just because they like it, you know?
Great. Thank you, Cindy. Uh, Valerie, did you have a question?
Um, yeah, I wanted to, oh, wait, sorry. Hang on a minute. Okay, I gotta unmute. Um, oh, there we are. Okay, yeah, I just wanted to say, if I was a business owner, I would, I mean, I think my hotel would be much more appealing without being util, disutilitarian. It just doesn't have the appeal that the, the aesthetic does of the arches. So it's better for the business owner as well because people would be more attracted to the hotel. I think it's a bad, poor economic decision to have such a stark colonade, whatever that is, across the front.
Okay, great. Thank you, Valerie. Um, any other questions? Uh, any other insight, uh, Matthew? To wrap this up before we have the commissioners share their opinions?
Uh, no further comments at this time. Thank you.
Lucas?
No further comments.
Okay. Did they just pass the buck or send us on our way? Um, okay.
We're available for any questions if, I think we've covered the key topics. So I will note, as was raised by Commissioner Convery, if I may, uh, the other considerations at issue, of course, water usage, parking was mentioned before. Those are, are aspects of this conversation, uh, that'll be focused on with the Planning Commission, but certainly can enter into the conversation as well.
Great, thank you. So again, the recommending, recommendation you share at this time is a recommendation that will go to the, uh, Planning Commission. That is our, our job at the moment to make a recommendation based on the Historic Resources Report we've received and the information we've, uh, received from the applicant and also from the, uh, ARG who prepared the Historic Resources Report. Okay, Cindy, would you like to go first?
I wanted to add one more thing.
Yes, of course.
And going back to the Planning Commission, can you be sure to remind them that the Secretary Interior Standards are not laws, they are essentially guidelines? Because that is sort of hard to tell, you know, and somebody says standards, you think it has to be that way, but it really, they really are guidelines. I think that's important for the Planning Commission to be aware of.
Sure, I can provide that clarity in staff before moving forward.
Thanks, Lucas.
Great, thank you. Uh, Cindy, would you like to share?
What?
What your, uh, what your thoughts are and your recommendation to the Planning Commission?
Oh, I recommend the arch as design element number one, correct? That's the one I recommend. Design element number one.
Okay. Gina?
Uh, like I said before, I, I, I don't like favoring one owner over another owner. I think that this, this building, this property already has a, a precedent set. And how we made decisions. And I think that, um, going forward, I'd like, when we work on our downtown, to be really clear, um, to make sure that we understand what we expect of contributing and non-contributing properties. But as far as, um, like I said, is, it, it will, just like this port cochere that's gonna come off, uh, just like this could come off and the, the arches that, um, uh, David Berry put on there will come off. This can come off as well. And understanding that, I am comfortable with either, 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 um, one. And so this is, you know, I'm gonna leave it to the, the owner. If this is what he wants as one, I, I'm not objected to it.
Okay, great. Thank you, Gina. Uh, Jenny, would you like to share?
Well, I, I, I agree with that. I think that, you know, I really don't want to get into a discussion about what's prettier or a matter of taste or, you know, I just think that's really not what we should be doing. So, um, you know, I think, I agree with Gina that, you know, that we went through all of the technical things, what's required, what's not required, the possibilities of landmarking, et cetera. It could come off, there could be another owner at some point. I think we, I agree, we leave it to the, uh, owners and the designers to recommend, to present and choose what they best feel, um, fits into the community without overwhelming it or fits into the community without overwhelming it, or, or copying it, or you know, trying to pretend that it, that it is a historical facade when it's not. I mean, I, I, I think that that it's compatible with the environment. I think the first one is compatible with the environment, I think the second one is less compatible with the environment. But I also think that these are designers and they should, you know, present what they aesthetically think will best work in our downtown.
Great, thank you Jenny. Valerie?
Yeah, I imagine, I don't know, did the owners hire that, that group, or was it the city?
We talked about the, Lucas?
Yeah, I'll clarify that, so it was, there was an RFP that was put out, and the decision was made by, by city staff to move forward with ARG. However, the applicants are footing the bill for that.
Okay, well then I would imagine that they probably agree, like I do, with the ARG. Because not only aesthetically, but I think economically, business-wise, it's a better decision for them, and if they wanna sell it for someone buying it. So, that's what I say.
So which option are you recommending Valerie?
Well, I prefer option one, but then again, of course, it is up to the owner, but I'm thinking if they footed the bill, they probably already agree with that design, that's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. For me, you know, I've gone around and round on this. I've, you know, been there when we have argued Secretary of the Interior Standards on other landmark buildings that were up for landmark, sorry I said that word Matt. But so, you know, I understand, I understand the fervor and the desire to stick with the Secretary of the Interior Standards. But it seems curious to me that we are talking about a building that where it's, you know, I took some exception to ARG's comments that this was a historical landmark because it's a box, it's two stories tall, and then there were two other items that they listed as being historic. I appreciate that they said even with whatever we did, it will still be a contributor to downtown Ojai. I did, the, the idea that there's going to be a confusion between the arches on El Roblar, if that's in fact what they go with, and the arches on the arcade. You know, when I drive into a town and I'm looking for something special, I will know what's special, and the fact that I see something that's maybe close to it, or in some way, to me, that just means that what, what is special has, is respected and admired, and somebody has adopted some part of that. And, and I know I'm on my way and getting close to what I'm looking for. And I love going to small towns and discovering small towns and looking. So I am, I would recommend option number one with the arches. It has a, quite a few reasons and support behind it. And we'll go from there. Anything else on item number one?
Can I just make another comment?
Yes.
I, another thing that I was really thinking about is that the second design, you know, it is a, is as well, a you know, example of trying to be compatible with the environment and the historical nature of the building. But it's definitely not a recreation of what the building originally was. So, you know, they're both, you know, trying to be close enough to the environment. I think if we, I think if the second design was looking at what was the first picture from nineteen fourteen that they showed in their presentation, and that facade of the original building, it, we would be having a very different discussion.
Yes. I appreciate you mentioning the pillars being a requip. I gotta go do some research.
It just screams, it screams requip to me.
That's why we have you on our okay, anything else? Lucas, Matt? On this item? Okay, we will close then this discussion item, and we will move on to Commissioner comments. Just a little guidance on Commissioner comments. This is essentially an update by our ad hoc groups on where they are. It's not meant to be an ongoing discussion, it's meant to be, if you have questions to the other ad hock. So there's two, there's actually been three ad hocks, there's been the original one Gina, myself and Craig Walker. And then there's the Communications, Gina and Jenny that have been working, and then there's the reaching out to the business owners, and that's Cindy Conry and myself. So again, it's a chance to share an update on where you are. Gina can talk about something she sent out this afternoon. It is not, and then an opportunity for questions, but not an opportunity for extended discussion or planning for a future event. Those things will take place in our meeting next Thursday, a week from this coming Thursday. Did I get that correct, close to correct, Lucas? We've been practicing this.
We've been practicing it, you did good.
Make sure we, we add here. And again, this, this is because we, this is a special meeting that was called for El Roblar. And we are essentially putting in the Commissioner comments just to be able to get our, give ourselves a quick update before we meet next week. So Gina and Jenny? Gina?
Well, I don't know Gina, do we, we spent a lot of time reviewing line by line, comment by comment, making, eliminating words, our Hemingway method. And, and just trying to make it as concise as possible. And when we, we also had some consultation, Gina, you might wanna comment on that. And I think this current, current, you know, version is, is very direct and very clear for the, for the public.
Gina?
It's, it is a very different document than a lot of what we talked about tonight, though. In regards to preservation and codes, and it's not that document. So, those are my, those are my comments.
Great, thank you Jenny. Gina?
Yeah, it's definitely a first document to really understand what we were trying to achieve here and why we were trying to do it. And, and the research that went behind it, and, and then working into the, the document from Caltrans. So we're hoping that this, these thirty questions, we refuse to go higher. If we try to restrain it at thirty questions. We, we really tried to think of what the question was that we wanted, that we've been hearing, that we've been hearing from everyone wanting to know. And then we really tried to answer it in a most transparent, direct way. And then we had, we had Craig Walker and Cherry, we shared it with them, and then we shared it with Dawn, who who I asked to really tear it apart, to redline the heck out of it, and, you know, see anything that, that she felt that was wrong with it, and she took me on my word on that, and the redlines that came from Dawn were a lot, and, and then we went back to Jenny, and we just went one by one to just really understand that we are answering them the, the most transparent way that we can, and I think we have a pretty good document there. I also shared the new map, this, these two were blind copied before our meeting tonight. And that map is, shows what were, the areas that, final areas, we think final, that we're working on. There's another document that is a spreadsheet that explains the map, that tells the address and the information of, of, if it was included as part of the Caltrans, and what we have on it as far as information, with the research that we have and links to the research. That has not been shared yet because there was information on there with property owners, so I want to make a more of a condensed version for commissioners, because the only people who really need to know the property owner's information is is the city and the other ad hoc with Brian and Cindy, as they do outreach to property owners. So I'm gonna make a, a different version that just makes it so, the map makes more sense. So we have, when we come back together, and we can have, whatever it is, when our meeting is, we'll be able to have, we'll have the same page, we'll, it'll be all the apples to apples, we'll be able to have the thirty-question document along with the current map, along with the backup to the map. And so we'll be able to have a really hearty discussion going forward.
Yes, Lucas?
Commissioner McHatten, if, if I could, I'd like to talk to you just briefly about the the boundaries of this map after this, after this meeting maybe tomorrow?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, questions? Cindy, it's you and me, so do you have any questions?
Oh, well, I did, yes, is this document just of general information for the city residents? It's not for the owners and property and businesses, right?
This, this document came to be because of the first opinion piece that was done in the, in the newspaper. And we needed to start setting records straight, because we, we were in a situation where we needed to wait till we got council approval before we could do public outreach. Having the paper come out with an article before we were able to come out with saying anything to the public put us in where we were playing catch-up. And so that's where this, this document came from, and then as well as future articles within accuracies, and then, and then just talking to people of, of, you know, what they're hearing and why they're hearing it. And so this is, it's kind of a catch-all thirty questions to, to get everybody up to speed to how we did this and why and everything. We do plan on doing some sort of a one sheet that will go to property owners that will be more specific to property owners' questions.
The reason why I asked is because the newspaper printed all this misinformation, you know, stuff that they decided to make up. And a lot of the, that information was about finances and milzaks and fees and permits and time, and what a pain in the ass the historic district would be.
I, I'm gonna have to step in.
Okay.
It's not a Q and A at this point, but it's, it's information.
This document was gonna be the one that we would give to the property owners and the, is this the doc, the document?
No, I think, I think this is a, I think this is the beginning document exactly, and, you know, addressing questions that have come up. But I think after this conversation with the El Roblar owners tonight, I think, yes, there are so many very specific questions that very specific business owners will have, and I think one of them that's interesting is that those buildings that are previously landmarked on this map are gonna, are gonna have a different answer than the, the contributing buildings. And so it's really, you know, it, that, and, and again, like Matthew said, you know, we're not discussing the same thing that we would be if the Oaks property had been landmarked at one point. It's a different discussion. And if, and I think that there, it's so many individual discussions. I feel, I think that Gina and I felt like we have to begin with a very general, basic, overall. You know, this document would, well, the opinion piece was an opinion piece, but basically this document would have given clarity to a lot of the things that were mentioned in some of the opinion pieces.
And with that, we're gonna move on from this item. As you know, it's not on the agenda tonight, I would recommend, and I'm, we'll communicate separately with Lucas and Chair Akins, that you simply, we simply list a standing agenda item on every agenda to be an update on the Downtown Historic Committee, Downtown Historic District Committee proposal. That would solve the Brown Act problem, so I, we're gonna move forward now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Great. I, okay, Lucas, I have a question for you, but I'll do it outside this meeting, okay? Anything, I think that's the last item, other than that, it's a German. So I thank you all very much for coming to this meeting, for your interest, your preparation for all of the work you're doing to get us to meeting for the El Roblar Hotel. I'm very grateful that Mayor Stix has stuck with us through all of these long, detailed meetings.
It's my pleasure, I just wanna say thank you to everyone for all this hard work, because I know it's pretty nitty-gritty and much appreciated.
Thank you Mayor. And so Lucas, thank you very much, Matt, thank you very much, thank you Cheryl, thank you Maura. We appreciate, and Sherry, we appreciate the support that we're getting from the Community Development Department and everybody, and again, Commissioners, thank you so much for all that you brought tonight. And with that, I'll adjourn the meeting.